Call the November Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here. Holly will not be here tonight. She called and let me know she was in an accident, but is doing all right, but will not be able to get up here tonight. So with that said, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have four sets of minutes to approve. Commissioners, y'all have had them. We'll take them one at a time. The first set of minutes is for the July 2nd meeting. Any changes or additions that need to be made to the July 2nd minutes? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Well, there's one.
Yeah.
About that. It says July 2nd, but the minutes reflect that it's July 7th.
Okay.
And I can't even give you which is right. We've got the calendar.
I'm pulling it. Just a second.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes.
We've accepted the minutes as submitted.
I have a motion. We'll have a second.
Second.
All, any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
Dr. Thayer, if you'll abstain, we're not at that need.
Okay. All right, one extension. The August 6th minutes. Any changes on those? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion. We'll have a second.
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Next.
I'm sorry. Mr. Burrell, if you'll abstain from that one, you are not present.
Yeah, it's not required that I abstain.
All right. September minutes. Any changes to the September minutes?
I don't have a September here. This is October. Okay.
I moved it. We approved minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All, any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. And finally, the October minutes. Any changes or corrections on that? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
Abstain.
One extension. All right. First item on the agenda, SD 1835. Public hearing to consider the request of North Hills at Fairhope LLC for preliminary plat approval of North Hills at Fairhope, 112 lot subdivision. Buford?
And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if you can indulge me just a moment. Our slides are not advancing on your screens. No, the slides are not advancing on the screens in the room. If y'all will indulge me just a moment, are the slides advancing on your screens?
No, we've just got approval of minutes online. Okay.
I got Terminator 2 on mine.
Okay.
There you go.
There you go.
That's right. I turned the mouse off. Oh, Chairman, Commissioners, I apologize for that. Thank you for indulging us just a moment. Mr. Chairman, are you ready for us to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, this is the subdivision that accompanies the zoning change annexation that we heard last month. What I'll attempt to do here is go through the details fairly quickly to reserve some additional time for questions. This is, of course, North Hills Fairhope. You see the case number for you right there. We have the zoning map on your screen right now showing the site outlined in black. This is Long State Highway 104. Roughly halfway between State Highway 181 and County Road 13, you'll see the engineer of record there, who's also with us here tonight, property owner. This subdivision requests 112 lots on 96.8 acres. This is the preliminary plat for the subdivision. The site is currently unzoned Baldwin County. And as we discussed earlier, there is a pending zoning slash annexation request on this property. We have before you hear the aerial image of the site. And you'll notice we've marked some of the nearby significant landmarks. This is very close to the existing The Waters PUD subdivision. And of course, State Highways 181 and 104. The property immediately west of the subject property is part of the Auburn University Gulf Coast Experiment Station. I'll note here, and we'll illuminate later, this development density requested of the entire site is 1.16 units per acre. This is recommended for approval with conditions, which we'll explain. So we'll go through very quickly here some of the background information. In the first bullet point up there, we reiterate the size of the project. And just wanted to briefly reiterate that this will encompass both R1 and R2 zoning. The R2 zoning request is pending by the City Council. The developer and their engineer will coordinate and simultaneously submit an R1 zoning area as well. We mentioned it adjoins The Waters. And then we also mentioned that Country Woods and Hollowbrook subdivisions are nearby existing single-family residential subdivisions, zoned R1 in proximity to the site. We will just, just wanted to very briefly reiterate right here is what we discussed last time. Majority of the site is, will be zoned R1. A portion of the site will be zoned R2. The map excerpt you see here, the light beige area, shows the area that is pending City Council approval for R2 zoning, annexation slash zoning. The chart, as we saw last time with the zoning case, we have a chart back there at the bottom of the slide indicating the lot sizes. In this case, your smallest lot size is 14,278 square feet, with the largest being just over, just under 55,000 square feet. Well, everyone's favorite subject compatibility analysis. What we'll just reiterate very briefly for you here is just explained last time. For the zoning case, we explained how this fits in with the comprehensive plan. I'm sorry, comprehensive plan analysis. And what we just want to reiterate very briefly here for you is the proposed development anchors are region by which undeveloped areas such as the experiment station. And this gives the transition, the density transition contemplated by the comprehensive plan. Reflects the density transition that will then allow future transition to higher density development near the village node contemplated by the comprehensive plan. The village node at the intersection of 181 and 184 you see there in the red starburst. Let's talk about some of the details of the application. We'll start with the traffic study, and that a traffic study was conducted for the site and included the application. What I'll provide a synopsis of for you here is what are the improvements to Highway 104 recommended by that traffic study. And marked in yellow right there, you'll see that, this is an excerpt from the traffic engineer. Left and right turn lanes entering the subdivision are warranted. And it's a little bit difficult to see in this drawing snippet, but they're reflected on this drawing, reflected in the plans that you saw in your SharePoint file. We'll also illuminate for you here that a 10-foot sidewalk easement is included on the preliminary plat along Alabama Highway 104. Also, a major component of discussing any subdivision approval is the green space requirement. So what the excerpts you see here is directly out of our review checklist. And what we want to illuminate is that the overall development attains, achieves, as proposed, 13.02 percent green space. And that is in compliance with the 10 percent requirement, as you see in this section from the, this section of the subdivision regulations. We have, there's a lot of text there, but that basically means that's where staff carefully evaluated and worked with the engineer to identify what is and is not eligible green space. And so there's a buffer area along Highway 104 that is not included in this amount of green space. And if you look very carefully at the drawing inset on the far right of your slide, you'll see where the sidewalk easement we referred to earlier is mentioned. And also, you've got a 20-foot green space and tree protection zone, not counted toward green space, but it does exist and is reflected on the plat. And then we just reiterate that here. We just reiterate that here and provide for you, this is a zoomed out considerably, but this is the actual preliminary plat for the entire development. And the site data table, we snipped the site data table and dropped it into this slide. And we can certainly come back to it to answer any questions. Another major component, whenever you're considering a subdivision, are the low-impact development techniques, part of the greater drainage system. There are four LID techniques proposed for this development. Those occur in 12 locations. As you see, we excerpted out of the subdivision regulations the techniques proposed for this development. First of all, there are four wet ponds. They're identified on the various plans as lakes. Those attain a total suspended solid, TSS removal of 80 percent. That's a pre-approved technique, as you see at the chart on the top left. In addition, three grass wells are proposed. And referencing the Alabama LID handbook, those attain an 80 percent TSS removal. Going on to grass buffers, and again, we've identified this in the subdivision regulations. And these attain an 84 percent TSS removal. And the engineer provided us some additional correspondence on where that 84 percent TSS removal came from. And it was actually based upon research conducted by ADAM, Alabama Department of Environmental Management. And so we have a snippet of a drawing right here. We wanted to explain where the grass vegetative buffers occur. On your screens, the olive-green color should stand out a bit better than it is on my screen. Understand that I, what we did here is we colored the entire, the entire buffer area. The subject area is 30 feet wide. We'll talk about the level spreaders on the next slide, but they're identified here in bright yellow. And of course, those are your discharge, your discharge device for your, for your wetland ponds. And then, as we said, finally, your level spreader is not a TSS removal device, but it is definitely an LID technique contemplated and allowed by the subdivision regulations because it breaks down the velocity of water discharge and helps to prevent erosion. So summing up and finishing up on the drainage, the drainage system. Basically, what we're demonstrating here, what we've done in previous cases, the entire treatment volume has been accounted for in the treatment volume calculations. And that the treatment volume reflected in the volume calculations is greater than the physical size of the site due to accommodations of flows from off-site. So the drainage area volume of each LID technique and its TSS removal summarized in the chart you see before you. All techniques include a TS removal of at least 80 percent, as you see right there. So what you'll notice is if you take the sum of the acreage of each of those devices, it actually exceeds the 98-acre site because it's accounting for off-site flows. And then finally, our final, our final topic, talking about drainage, is that to meet the compliance of stormwater regulations. The stormwater treatment system has been designed to block process flows for two, five, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm events. Post-development flows are less than or equal to pre-development flows. And so the pre-development flows are on the upper chart. Your post-development flows are on the lower chart. So we'll, we'll go through some concluding remarks. And this, the bullet points here, just briefly, just basically reiterate what we discussed previously. It's location next to the experiment station, serving as an anchor point for the eventual development of a possible village node. We talked about the, the development density is less than the development density of the surrounding neighborhood, which we, which we covered in great detail during the zoning case. That 1.16 units per acre is less than the 1.294 units per acre of the adjacent properties surrounding neighborhood. We covered the green space requirements exceeding 10 percent. The improvements to Highway 104 we discussed. And of course, that the, the drainage system is in compliance with the various requirements of the subdivision regulations. So therefore, the approval for recommendation includes some conditions, which are fairly standard for a case like this. Item one there is, of course, the condition of approval of the, approval of the zoning slash annexation establishment by the City Council. Item two was a request by the Horticulturalist for preservation of trees on undeveloped lots. And we reference the, you see the article right there. That was a request of the Horticulturalist. And then item three are some items requested by the code enforcement officer, which are fairly standard items that will be requested prior to land disturbance. And usually those items, typically, we have those items resolved by the time we go to a pre-construction meeting. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Jason Estes with Dewberry Engineers is here tonight for any engineering questions. But before we turn it over to the applicant and his engineer, I'm certainly happy to answer questions.
I've got a question. Buford, kind of go back to something in our last meeting that Ralph brought up about some of the other subdivisions on the east side of 181 on 104. The roads that are certainly being taxed in terms of usage right now, especially in the early mornings and the late afternoons. What is the, I can't, I really can't get a grip on it off of this, off of this map, but do we have enough room on the south property lines of the lots that are immediately north of 181 to accommodate 104 being four-lane? At some point? Without us taxpayers having to buy their houses and their lots?
And that's a fantastic question, Chairman and Commissioners. I cannot provide you an answer to that myself. I hate to put Mr. Johnson on the spot, but he may have some more information from ALDOT that I'm not privy to at this time. But I cannot give you a really good answer about that. And what I'll interject here, very, very briefly, is that, of course, for the, in a, in a, in a preparation of a recommendation of a subdivision, of course, the traffic study that we get, and the traffic study we require, basically just recommends the necessary improvements to the roadway to accommodate the site. So that's really an improvement recommendation.
But that's just a snapshot of a period of time.
Yes, sir.
Right now and not even next year.
Yes, sir. That is a snapshot of time to recommend the necessary improvements to allow the site to be serviced by the existing roadway. A more robust, and a more robust, comprehensive traffic study would answer that question. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, for saying that. That a more comprehensive traffic study that takes a great deal of time to, to, to put together could better answer that. But as we sit here tonight, I really can't give you a very good answer to that.
Buford, I said this last time, and I think with Art the same thing. I don't see how you're doing a traffic study without knowing where ALDOT's limits, where they're going to be taking, are going to be. Because you don't know how much space you've got up in there. Somewhere, somebody's got to have some information. Because I know they're already clearing along 181 in some places. Somebody has to have an overlay to see what this is.
The other thing go along with it, we've got, I think it's tonight also, but there's a subdivision, what is it, Bill's number two, I think?
Yes.
No, that's not it.
That's on Gafford Road extension.
That's, yeah. But, but we've, we've got another one that's contemplated on, immediately on the south side of 104. From this one, that you bring them both together. And I mean, 104 is like 60, looks like we talked about last month. 104 and 64 are train wrecks already.
Well, I think you have to remember that we aren't the state. The state makes those decisions. The state does that when they choose to do that. We really don't have any control over that as far as when things are four-lane. I would tell you that I don't think that adding lanes is always a proper, is a proper response to traffic. I think more roadways, alternative roadways is, is a response to traffic that could help as well. Not just increasing the width of roads. We see that happens in Atlanta. It doesn't do much good when you go to Atlanta. So there's other methods you can to mitigate traffic. But, you know, I don't think the DOT, I'm not aware of any kind of road widening improvement to 104 that I've heard of. I'll ask Richard, do you have, you hear anything? At this point in time, I don't think anyone, there's anything on the, on the drawing board for 104. We, obviously, they're four-laning 181 right now, but I don't, I'm not aware of anything for 104. Now, if I'm not mistaken, Buford, this project has a buffer area along the road, correct?
Correct.
So there's already a...
20 feet wide.
20 feet wide. So you already got a 20-foot buffer there that's, that's there on this existing development that could provide some, some width or some room if and when 104 is ever chosen to be expanded. So you do have some, have some room there. I'm not sure how wide their right-of-way is, if there's other additional right-of-way that's available for them to use as well. But, and also on the south side of the road, there's a whole lot less structures on the south side of the road, which typically they'll, they'll look, they'll look at that as well. Path of least resistance as far as, you know, purchasing right-of-way. But, I mean, but it's, I mean, I wish we had the ability to do a, a, a large, long-term traffic study. That's, that's a very, very in-depth process. And, and at this time, I don't think that there's the, that that's in place to do that. If we had it, I'm not, I'm not sure if the, if the DOT doesn't have the funds to improve a roadway. I don't know what good that would, I mean, it would be nice to know that, but I don't know if, if the results of that showed a need to ride and to widening a roadway. I don't know if the funds are there to do that anyway.
Buford? On the cover sheet of SD 1835, it shows the site rectangular. On the map, it shows a rectangular site. I guess that the, on that cover sheet, can we go back to the cover sheet? Is it including the lot to the west of The Waters as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's a, that's a good, a very good observation. And when we're creating these images to use in, to use the images in the, in the report, that area for which was created via a conveyance is not yet reflected in our map viewers. And so for the sake of trying to draw a very jagged line and make it more confusing, I just simply outlined the subject property currently reflected. That reflects in the map viewer. But you're correct. The area shown in the plat does encompass, and so as you can see right here, that piece of property to the northwest, that what you're seeing on the plat is absolutely correct reflection of today's request.
The Waters, which is the inset. Maybe you can go back to that slide where you just were. Where the first one, I don't know if it's fine. Those are all lots contiguous to the east line and the north line. I mean, there's no right-of-way for a connection there.
That, no, sir. Well, and not proposed for this, for this application. And that would involve a pretty substantial wetland crossing. And if you'll notice in the aerial photo, which is a bit clearer on your screens, you have the various detention areas for The Waters. And so I think the engineer, and Mr. Estes can probably answer this much better than me, but I think they probably felt for the purposes of this development, it'd be more appropriate not to try to make a wetland crossing to The Waters.
When The Waters came to us, we didn't require any kind of connectivity there because of the wetlands. And we were told that. Now that I'm looking at it, though, it looks like this one big lot. If you go back to the, the plat with the inset of The Waters. It looks like this one big lot in the southwest corner of The Waters is contiguous to lots number, I need a magnifying glass, but is that 78 and 79 of this proposed subdivision?
Yes, sir.
That's, if you look, look at the aerial photo on the front page. It's predominantly wetland.
Wetlands in the back of that lot.
Yeah.
Because it should be nice to have.
Yes, sir. And Chairman, it may be a bit better this image than what you should have on your screen right now.
Mr. Chairman, we did have that discussion with them when we met with them early in this process regarding the connectivity to this. There were several encumbrances of the connectivity to the west. You have, it's all Auburn Central service property.
Can you put that traffic thing back up there again, that slide?
So, but you had Auburn Central property to the, to the west that was not going to be developed. And then also, going back to the east, there were some grade changes that if, to make a connection, you had to do a large amount of cut and fill that was, that seemed to be a little bit excessive from that perspective and what that would do to the resulting property and, and so forth. And so the connectivity was looked at. However, this property is sort of unique with several encumbrances that limited the ability to create connectivity.
I'd probably put a connection between, but this will be later in the meeting. 49 and 50 on this to the Auburn substation. You know, we say never, but on the other hand, when Auburn looks around, at some point, as this property value explodes and they say, gosh, these acres are worth, you know, a half million dollars an acre here, and we can go up to Monroe County and get land for $10,000 an acre, there's a point at which, you know, all bets are off. So I would just say, you know, might, you know, be conservative just to put one there just to...
And Chairman, Commissioners, the, if you'll look on this slide, if you look in the southeast corner of the plat, and my apologies for it maybe being a bit small, but you can see the, you can see the connection, the connection Stub Street in the southeast corner, southeast corner of the plat. And then, and Commissioner Thayer had a question, if he, if he could repeat to me the slide we wanted to return to?
Put that traffic one back up again.
Yes, sir. Here we are.
When you're, when you're doing this and realizing what Art and I are both saying, there are streets, I mean, subdivisions on both sides coming online. They say a traffic lane is warranted, and there's going to be, of course, a left and a right turn lane. And I'm asking the question is, how big is the stacking lane going to be? Because you're going to have an interrupted traffic down in this area. How many, what kind of capacity are each of these lights going to have? If you have two or three cars that are stacked, and that's the end of it, you're going to have a backlog back down the highway in both directions. And, you know, I don't, I don't see that that's accounted for in this. Maybe it is, and I'm just not seeing it.
So is the question that the entrance to the neighborhood is going to block the stacking of the, of the traffic at 104 and 181? Is that what I'm saying?
And understand, we're not in a vacuum. Part of the thing they have to do is, is they went to ALDOT. ALDOT gets the same traffic study that we got. The traffic engineer's job is to determine what the warrants are for the turn lanes. And part of that process is determine the required stacking or queue in those turn lanes for the, the ultimate build-out of this development. So, you know, there is a, a engineering model that they'll follow to determine how many left-hand turns, how many right-hand turns, and thus what the length that has to be. We don't get to approve or review that. ALDOT, ALDOT will be the ones that will make that determination. Also, ALDOT hopefully is looking at if there is a future anticipation of an overall widening to add additional lanes. They have the ability to say, well, we need you to buffer 30 more feet to the north to preserve, you know, right-of-way acquisition at that sometime in the future. So the assumption, which may be dangerous, is that ALDOT has looked at this. The geometry you see there has at least been blessed. And it will have to be permitted by the developer if he's, if he is successful of getting a preliminary plat approval. And ALDOT will review it from, from an engineering perspective and everything else and make the final approval. And there may be requirements for those lanes to be lengthened or something of that nature at that time. But understand that, that this is their highway, and they are the regulatory body on it.
Yeah, it's our problem when it goes in, though. That's the problem. You know, whereas if they make some decisions based upon what they feel is right, and those decisions turn out wrong, Mr. Burrell and others start getting a lot of phone calls because the traffic is all jammed up.
You're absolutely correct. But the, the challenge that we have is, is that ALDOT has the jurisdiction to determine where the access point is and all the geometric arrangement of that road. We, as a planning commission, could recommend and suggest, but ultimately, they make the final call on that.
Thank you, Richard.
All right, thank you, Buford. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on behalf of the developer?
If there's any additional questions, we're John Avon.
Okay.
Dewberry Engineering. I have Jason Estes here as well, project engineer.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing then and may call you back up. Thank you, John. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. No one has signed up to speak to this item, North Hills at Fairhope. But if you'd like to speak, now is the time. Any questions, concerns? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time.
Wait a minute.
Oh, yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street in Fairhope. I have a concern that is developing as this area is developing. The intersection of 104 and 181 is a possible future village center. As the developments are occurring in this area, and as these intersecting highways are probably going to be expanding, I have increasing concern about the viability of a village center that meets the kinds of expectations that are in the comprehensive plan ever being realized at that location. It's also increasingly difficult to get a sense of real comfort with the developments that are occurring in these subdivisions because I can't organize them around an emerging village center. The pedestrian, the kinds of activities that one might hope to see just don't seem to be a... seem to be appearing at all. And that's, that doesn't have to be addressed now, but that's a concern that, um, is weightier and weightier with each piece that's put into place in this location. Thank you.
Yeah, that's very, very good points, and I wish I could argue with them, with you on any of them, but, uh, I think you're absolutely right and very astute.
Can I, can I address some of those?
Yeah, go ahead, with one exception, we do have a 10-foot east lip for a sidewalk, but, uh...
Yeah.
And, and I, I concur with, with those concerns about the village center. You know, we've had, uh, we've been, met with several developers recently about some village center locations and, and how to go about establishing the village center. On our, as was said previously, on our Comforter Plan, we do have these village center locations that are highlighted on the Comforter Plan. Doesn't provide a lot of context to that, just shows a location and some, some language, uh, that's some guidance language. But also in our zoning ordinance, we have three village districts in the zoning ordinance. Unfortunately, they have not been realized, we don't have any of them that's on the map yet. One of the problems that we encountered in talking with the developer about the current zoning districts we have is they're very, 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 uh, difficult to achieve some of the goals or some of the requirements in there, um, because the, the mix of land use and location of, of, uh, off-site things makes it very, very difficult. We would like to, um, look at those and review those and make those a little more applicable to certain locations in the city, so we do have, have that concern. However, I will tell you, I, I, I think we would not want to see four corners of an intersection developed with a village center intensity. Typically, that's not, uh, the best practice, uh, maybe two or three corners, but not all four corners. So, so I don't think, um, this, this intersection's lost by any means. One of the difficulties also is, we're, we're talking about property that is unzoned, unincorporated in the county. We have very little jurisdiction, if they chose to stay in the county and develop under those regulations, they certainly could. It being unzoned, there'd be no control over the land use or anything else like that, so, um, that's some other issues that we're, we're dealing with and trying to grapple with. So I think we would like to try to incentivize people to come in. With the village districts, they're a very intense district, they allow intense, uh, commercial square footage, and also, um, a variety of land, of residential land uses that, uh, that are, are somewhat higher density, and that's what makes that work. Without the higher density, you don't have the walkability and those kind of things. But since it's never been done before, it has been difficult trying to encourage people to use that, because this hasn't been done, it's a little bit, uh, unknown and a little bit intimidating for some people to, to pipe that off and, and achieve that. But we do share those concerns, we are working, trying to find a way to make this happen. We hope, we're hopeful that as we move forward with the comprehensive planning process, those will be addressed, and we'll have some guidance that we can, uh, make those more workable and, and start feeding those into the, to our long-range plans, and so when people do come forward, there is some comfort level that, uh, that they can achieve those goals, uh, if they do do the, a village-type development.
All right, uh, anybody else who wants to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting back over to Commissioners. John Avant is here on behalf of the developer, if you've got any questions or any more questions for the staff.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It appears on this plat at least that one of these, that one of the detention areas that the lake is, um, in the wetland, is that an existing lake? Are you proposing a lake in a wetland?
That's actually, it, it's a proposed lake, and it is in, within the wetlands. We are, uh, getting a permit, and it's, I think the, uh, lake size is actually less than a half acre. So, it's just a nationwide permit is what it is.
To, to impact the...
Yes, we are, it, it's going to be, it is part of the wetlands.
So you'll have to do mitigation.
That will be created into a lake, but it's going to be very minimal.
Okay. How, uh, how will that detention area interact with the wetlands? Will it overflow into the wetlands? Is it receiving water from the wetlands? How do they work together?
It, it would interreact with the wetlands. It's, then again, there's a tremendous off-site flow that comes underneath 104 and then through the site. And we designed it where, where slowing up the water within the lake area, discharging it at a slower rate, and also, uh, treating the, uh, the water as it comes through as well. I mean, if, right, if you go out there today during a rainstorm, you'd probably see it almost blood red, and hopefully what we're trying to achieve is, uh, you know, have some filtration with this, with our proposed area.
So the lake would serve as like a settling pond, and then water would move into the...
Yes.
So, okay.
So it, hopefully it would enhance it rather than hurt it.
Before the questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
But I, I do have one other question, John, and I hate to put you on the spot, but on one of the maps that, that we were looking at, the driveway across the street seemed to be offset from the entrance to the subdivision, is that correct? It looks to me like that if we're going to have a traffic light, maybe we line up the two intersections or something.
What you're seeing, Richard, I believe is, is a proposed development. You're, you're looking at a right-in and right-out driveway?
I'm looking at the one across the street, thinking that if somebody's trying to turn left and people are trying to turn left into this subdivision, that there may be a conflict of left-turn lanes.
Actually, that, it, there's an existing driveway there today.
Okay.
And, and it's lined up, there's only, where this entrance is, it's only, it's designed to be exactly at the point of sight distance.
Okay, and I know the highway department will take that into consideration.
Yeah, this driveway and the turn lanes, all that's taken into account for those people's movement as well, in the existing driveway. There's a proposed development that's going to have a driveway a little bit further west, and that's going to be coming up in the next month or two, and that's going to be a right-in and right-out for the simple reason they don't own any of the property to have a proper sight distance. So what they're going to do is create a right-in and a right-out. They can't use the turn lanes or anything that's being provided for North Hills.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My same comment I make every, we, every month that we come in here, I'm, I'm looking at this green space and common area, I'm just not seeing places where kids can play. I see some green space that surrounds detention ponds and backs up to wetlands, and, you know, there's a lot of acreage shown, but there's just not, there's just not much usable space. I, I don't know when we're going to, you know, change our ordinances so that we require some usable space and not some pretend space.
Didn't we make a motion when you...
Yes.
We're working on that, John.
Yeah, and we have a proposal, the project will be bringing back at the, at the next meeting in January, or December meeting.
The fact that this is R1 and R2, probably vote in favor of it, but this is, we're not doing anything to make these things family-oriented.
The, the changes are, we've, we've taken your advice on that, and we're actually good, the changes require, um, require green space in R1 now, as well as more green space and has a little bit more wordage to where it is and makes it...
And, and Mr. Chairman, you know, and we also, in taking consideration, uh, Council President Morell's concerns, we did try to, try to provide better guidance in there as far as the green space and its usability, its location and all, and how it's defined, so you know it's green space. But I believe we should have a, a draft coming back for your approval at the January, at the December meeting, so...
I mean, I'm trying to put myself in that, living in that subdivision with a family, and we've got a little over an acre in that, in that, uh, one circular region in the northwest corner, but, you know, I don't think your kids are going to play in an area that's surrounded by a street on all sides. The rest of the, um, green spaces, you know, has a detention pond in the middle, and it might be good for walking, I can see that, it may be good for sitting on a park bench, but, um, it's, the way Fairhope's growing, and we've got a lot of young families in here, and, um, I appreciate the efforts to make it R1 and R2, I, I do, you know, I've, I've seen a lot of higher density, and the overall density of this subdivision doesn't upset me too much, but I'd like our developers to get a little bit more creative and make these a little more family-friendly. Because it's just, it's just, I'm, I'm just kind of tired of looking at the same ones without usable space.
And, Mr. Chairman, also, you know, when you do have, as, as Councilman Morell's pointed out, when you do have the higher densities, the open space becomes much more critical. A lot of times when you have an R1-type district, you have larger lots, and you have backyards to play in and things like that, as you get smaller, uh, higher density, smaller lots, that, that space becomes smaller and smaller, so you offset that with more common area open space. And so we, we certainly want to create places so, uh, you know, children can play, you have areas that are, that are suitable for, for passive recreational activities such as, uh, you know, children and what they do typically, so, um, but that, that will be reflected in that, in that draft coming back.
Thank you.
Really, uh, on this particular one, as opposed to some of the other, um, cases we're going to consider a little bit later, I felt like aesthetically, because of the topography in the wetlands, the green space is actually more pleasing than some of, some of the others where it's just a skinny little strip where you really, you know, at least, it's nice to have a balance of fields and wild spaces. And whether the wild spaces are forced on somebody or not, the fact that the wetlands are there and there's a buffer, that to have these sort of irregular-shaped wild spaces, I thought was actually kind of nice.
And also, when you talk about common area, you, I mean, it can be an asset to development, you're not just checking a box, providing X percent, you, it can, if you, if you design it well with a thoughtful design, you can really, uh, turn some of the lots that into very, very, very valuable pieces of property facing a, a, a park or a green space. So it, you know, what we want to do is encourage, as, as Councilman Morell pointed out, encourage people to be a little more creative, a little more thought into the process, not just checking a box, providing a percentage and letting it go. So, uh, that's something that we'll be focusing on again as we move forward.
And the only other comment I'd like to make, too, is, and I met with, uh, Andy Bobey with Dewberry last week about the, uh, what would be Phase Two of the transmission capacity upgrade to the wastewater system, and I've got a spreadsheet that shows some of the lift stations that currently are what would be downstream of this particular one, uh, somewhat loaded, so we're, we're looking at options to potentially upgrade one of the lift stations to become more of a, a master lift station, and we're looking at little force-man upgrades that we can do between there and where the intermediate school lift station is. So we're making progress on that, we haven't, we're looking at whether we can upgrade an existing lift station easier than upgrade the one that would be in this subdivision, but either way, we're, we're working with the developer to, and, and the engineer to, to come up with a plan that fits a more long-term plan for this region, so, just so you know that.
Interesting. Um, I would like to see, um, an easement between 40 and the lots 49 and 50 going over to the Auburn land. Doesn't have to be paved or anything, but I just, I just think at some point, uh, you know, I just think at some point, and maybe it'll never be needed, and the real estate agents can all go out and when they sell those lots, wink, wink, and say, hey, it'll never, don't worry, a road will never come between here, but I just don't know if Auburn will be there forever. 49 and 50 are right there on the left, lined up with that little alleyway. But, um, if I'm the lone wolf and everybody else thinks I'm crazy, um...
It's, it's right across here, that alley. I think the connectivity is important, and, um, what I was trying to, and it looks like there might be some room without backseat planning, you know, uh, it looks like there might be some room for some of the larger corner lots to squeeze to allow that to happen. I wonder if that could also, if it's a right-of-way, if it could serve as a green space in other area until such time that it's needed as a road, as long as we're discussing it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if it'd ever be needed, but I, I...
The only thing I would be careful of, we do have minimum lot sizes, this, part of this development's R1, part of it's is R2, so, uh, if you have a lot that goes below the minimum, that's going to be a problem.
So that might be squeezing somebody.
I, I don't know what the lot sizes are, I don't, I don't have those in front of me, but...
And Chairman Commissioners, I've moved back to the slide that contains the R2-zoned area, and so, um, if, if one of y'all can look at your, at your plat, um, more closely on your screen and identify those lot numbers that the chairman was, was speaking about, then that way we'll at least know if there are one size, because then there will be at least 15,000 square feet.
They're not, they're R2.
They're 22,000 plus.
Okay.
Well, I think looking at this, maybe even between 51 and 52, I just think we ought to have a connection toward that Auburn, I just, excuse me, I think we ought to have a connection toward that Auburn property. I think we all make an assumption that that substation's going to be there for the rest of our and our grandkids' lives, but at some point, you know, when Auburn sees that they have a gold mine, their trustees could decide, you know, why don't we move, you know, to Monroe County or Connecker County or somewhere where the land costs, you know, 5% of here and, you know, uh, I'd be thinking along those lines if I were trustee 10 years from now.
And Chairman Commissioners, I'd defer that statement to, to the developer and to the engineer, but, um, to see if they have the space and if they had the space to place a 50-foot right-of-way, um, carve out an easement with a sufficient 50-foot right-of-way for a potential, for a potential future subdivision.
I mean, subdivision regs will require that they have it, so I think they need to make the space, personally. I mean, our assumption is that because that substation will never be developed, but I don't have that assumption, you know, I don't make that assumption.
Yes, sir, yeah, we, that's, um, dependent upon, upon, uh, the desires of Auburn and their property management division for future purposes for that site.
They almost sold it three years ago. Yeah.
I think that's a really good point.
Okay, well, somebody can make it with a motion, subject to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give a counter to that, is that, you know, by putting that right-of-way there, or, uh, stubbing out a road there, you're, you're giving them access to what would otherwise be an island, pretty much with that wetlands coming through there. And, and that makes it more highly desirable, we're under no obligation to make their land more development, you know?
No, I'm saying between lots 51 and 52, that's not wetlands at all there.
No, no, I'm saying, though, but right now, that if you look at the topo, oh, well, not the topo, but, um, the picture that shows the wooded area, and you can kind of see where the wetlands comes down to the west of there, um, yeah, that picture right there. If you look at that wetlands that runs to the west of that site, there's a little, almost a triangle, uh, in the north east corner of the adjacent property. And, uh, that'd be the only way, really, without crossing that wellens, that you could, could get to that. So, certainly makes it more valuable, but it also ripens it for development, which we're under no obligation to ripen it for development. In fact, I'm kind of adverse to that. Not development, but ripening.
Yes, sir.
We've looked at this really hard and met with Wayne and Buford on it, on, in the connectivity aspect of it, and where you're talking about in the back of the waters, I was the principal in that deal, and where you're talking about the large lot is, uh, in the back of that back cul-de-sac in the, which would be the southwest corner, that there's wetlands that run, runs through there. And then to the very, uh, north of this whole property is a huge amount of wetlands back there that we couldn't do anything with, and so much of why we looked at this property hard was, uh, being buffered by Auburn. And, you know, we looked at that, too, but, uh, you know, we felt like putting, putting the access point on, uh, which was, um, which is the Johnson property, the Johnson Farm, that's another 80-acre parcel. We did not feel like it was remotely necessary, as well as Wayne and Buford agreed with us, too, about the Auburn property, Lee, you know? I mean, you know, we can look at it all day long, Auburn may, may not sell it, but, I mean, they've owned all that property all this time, I mean, I think it's fruitless. And then on your aspect, we did take out a lot, um, uh, at the entrance where the front pond is there, and we wanted a much larger pond, but we chose to, to go with the national permit, which was only affecting about a half acre of the wetlands there, so that had a big aspect, you know, and, uh, shortening that pond there, and they have engineered this very, uh, strongly to take care of the filtration and such. But, uh, putting another lot into Auburn, I think is fruitless. And then your talk about the turn lane and all, we've done extensive studies with, uh, the state on that, and they've basically given us the parameters, you know, basically on the turn-in, uh, turn-in lanes going in there, and, um, you know, I, I truly felt like that they over-engineered it significantly to the tune of a little over half million dollars to put that turn-in lane in, you know, to make things work and such, so I don't know what else we could do there. The density level, I mean, you know, we've tried to come in here with large state lots that were comparable to the waters, bring something different into the city instead of, instead of something very high density. So as you can see, we got 1.16, uh, lots per acre. I don't know of another development that's probably been brought in front of you guys in quite some time that even comes close to that level of density. So we tried to put a lot of thought into what we're doing here, the creativity and meeting all the required... meeting all the requirements, but, I mean, you know, pulling out another lot at this point, Lee...
I'm not saying pull out a lot, I'm just saying, take a foot or two off of thirty lots. My only comment is, is that, you know, our regulations state that you have connectivity, and, you know, our only assumption of not giving this connectivity is, oh, well, Auburn owns it, Auburn will never sell it. And I don't buy that. I think at some point Auburn's going to sell it, because I think it's going to be a gold mine, and they can replicate it for, you know, five cents on the dollar. And at that point, having a connection where eventually that property could get, that those houses could get over to thirteen without having to get out on 104, to me, would be valuable, and I'm not talking about giving up a lot at all. I, you know, you're not talking about a lot of feet to have a possible...
Then we're changing the lot sizes significantly, though. I mean, I think what we were trying to achieve there, more than anything, was trying to come in there with at least hundred and ten foot wide lots to be comparable with the waters.
How wide would a, would a connect, would a connection need to be?
Fifty feet.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but, I mean, we've met with, you know, with your city planners significantly looking at that too, and trying to make a good decision as well.
There's fourteen lots that you could take it out of.
Yeah.
I can't tell. Twenty-two thousand square feet.
Yeah, I'm just...
No, I mean, I'm listening, but I mean, I'd like for you to listen to what, to what, to the decisions that we made, that we've been planning on this for about a year to try to bring this together.
Well, the developers were like, y'all, we really would need to be up here, because everything y'all do, you do such a good job on, frankly.
Well, we try hard, yes.
But I just, I just really, you know, connectivity's one thing that all the, you know, city people who've come and talked to us said is, you know, the main thing we need to really look at, and I just don't buy that that Auburn will never be sold, but...
Well, let me give you another one, though, with the bottom that runs through that eighty acres that belongs to Auburn. You know, ideally, we're already talking about Highway 104 and the impact of traffic on 104. Ideally, Auburn's piece, we'd come back, cross that bottom near the property, near the east property line, and go out on thirteen and not even come onto 104. I mean, from a logical standpoint for access, egress and into that place would certainly be off thirteen and not 104, where you've got two major entryways onto 104.
Right, but my point is, then you have a connectivity where you connect to that, and then everybody in this subdivision can access County Road thirteen without pulling out on 104, and that's the whole purpose of connectivity.
But they would have to cross that major wetlands right there to do that. I mean, you've got kind of a landlocked corner right there, and I don't see any need to...
The whole northern section of that park.
To make that more desirable in an environmentally sensitive area, we're going to barbecue it over that.
So, just to put Lee's idea into context, it, and I recognize your frustration, it's obviously, it's been done very thoughtfully.
Just I'm listening, you know, but...
But to put it into context, it looks like if there's fourteen lots and you need fifty feet, you know, it's just like three and a half feet out of each lot. I'm not looking at lot dimensions, I don't know what the lots are and what that means, but can someone fill in the gap with, you know, what is the frontage with the...
Changes in the enormous amount of planning that we put into place to try to bring something good to the city, you know? But I understand where you're coming from too, but we talked about it extensively from the beginning in our planning stages.
Mr. Chairman, just, and we did meet with them, and we talked about connectivity. When we looked at this, I mean, we're looking at it, from my perspective, as a practical sense. If Auburn sells it, they might, I, we didn't feel like that was, that was going to be a possibility, but also the site had...
There are no restrictive covenants for that property.
I agree, but, I mean, I think, and they may, I mean, but from our perspective, when we were looking at this, we're looking at it from a, from the practical standpoint, and this property had several encumbrances to the connectivity. One was the grade, it was on one location that we were talking about, further north on the, on the north, northeast side of the property, and that was, the grade change there was pretty drastic, and so that would be a huge cut and fill that would be, make that probably, you know, a non-starter, then also the wetland issue. So, when we're looking at, we want, we want to encourage connectivity, however, there are some cases where it becomes impractical. I do believe connectivity is very, very important, but when you talk about connectivity, you're talking, a lot of times, you're talking about in areas that's a kind of a grid fashion, and also connectivity from multiple routes, and so, it's important to us, but I just want to make sure that you all know that we did talk about this, and we, internally, we talked about it quite often, but we felt like there were some encumbrances on this property that limited the ability to have connectivity.
Got it. All right, good deal. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion. Case SD 18.35 North Hills at Fairhope, move that we approved at subject staff recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, moving along. Next item on the agenda is ZC 1812. This is a zoning request of the Bills, Number Two LLC, to establish an initial zoning of R2 medium-density single-family residential district conditional upon annexation into the city of Fairhope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a conditional annexation. This property is located at kind of the corner of, just north of the corner in Gayford Extension. It's comprised of two pieces of property of twenty-two acres and thirty-one acres totaling about fifty-three point nine three acres, and on the eastern border, it borders Lawrence Road. This property is, as you stated, is a conditional annexation. As many of you may know, according to ordinance, if you come in voluntarily, you automatically get R1. If you want something different than R1, you can make a conditional annexation request with a zoning request, and that's why they're in front of the planning commission tonight, is to get that initial zoning. Currently, it's unincorporated Baldwin County, and they are looking to do, to achieve an R2 zoning category. R2, again, requires seventy-five foot lot widths. If they were to stay in the county, it would be a hundred foot lot width, and so, they're before you tonight. We did look at this very, very carefully. We, we looked at the surrounding property, and one thing I want to point out, you have some R1 properties that abuts this, it's the North Station. It's R1, but when you look at it, the density and the lot sizes aren't R1-sized lots, they're more in line with R2. After further investigation and research on this issue, what we discovered was, is that North Station and Gayford State's plantation were platted in the county and annexed into the city voluntarily, which is where the R1 district came from. I think the R1 district does not accurately reflect the current lot sizes and lot widths on the property. So, that should, in our opinion, when you look at the densities of those developments, they are more in line with an R2 density for those. And so, I want to make that, make that known, because it is a bit misleading when you look at the photography and the zoning map, and you see that. As a matter of fact, when you look at the, I believe that the North Station development is in the neighborhood of about two point four eight units per acre, and that immediately abuts this. So, the R2, in our mind, would be consistent with this. I would want to note too, that in your packet, there is just a conceptual layout. The property does have a wetland, does have a wetland buffer. I think we would see substantially lower densities here because of those, those conditions that exist on the site. And again, it is currently unincorporated Baldwin County, and so, I want to make that, make that known too. So, we did do the compatibility analysis, we found it to be compatible with the, some of the adjoining properties, and did not note any, any conditions with that. I also want to note too, we did look at Lawrence Road, since one of these will be annexing, potentially could be annexing Lawrence Road. It is currently a county road, it's a fifty to sixty foot right of way there, and also a twenty foot of asphalt, which is pretty standard for a county road. So, we do, we do feel like that there is adequate ability to service these lots on this development, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
This is a more broad question than just the specific case, but I wonder, every single time we look at properties that are being annexed, and, you know, the pro seems to be once they're annexed, we are able to enforce our conference of plan or bring it to fruition because of zoning. However, within the conference of, is there a goal to, how, you know, what is the end of our annexation? I mean, I moved here from Houston, you know, you have seen where it can go. And what is, also, what assurances and what mechanisms do we have to make sure that, you know, Richard's job is not made miserable as we annex all of these areas that will then need to be maintained?
A couple of things first. We did speak to Richard about the utilities, they are, as your staff report indicates, there are utilities available for this property. This is, again, just a rezoning, this is not a preliminary plat. A lot of the heavy lifting when it comes to utilities and those kind of things are done at the preliminary plat stage to ensure you do have the appropriate infrastructure. This is just in an annexation. As far as the, where we're going with annexation, on page four of your set report is a conference of plan, it does currently provide a great deal of guidance for that. It does show this as residential, and that's about the most guidance that we have in there. It does talk about a, kind of a cascading density level away from a village center. As you can see from your staff report, there is a village center sort of north and south of this property, and so, this kind of falls between these two. We're hopeful, as we move forward with the planning processes, with the conference of plan, we do have more guidance as far as what the intensity and density levels will be in certain locations, but currently, right now, we don't have a lot of guidance from that perspective. It does show it as residential, this is residential. One of the factors too, that you have to, I think, factor in is, this is unzoned, unincorporated Baldwin County, so you also have to factor that in as well. And so, and it's, you know, and it's, I don't like that, but it's a reality we have to face, that they could stay in the county and develop into large lots, kind of a sprawling type situation, or also have some other kind of use there that we may not, we may find incompatible, and there's no, there's no measure to control that at all. So, we're kind of looking at it two different ways.
I understand that concern, my concern is that we have some kind of a financial model to ensure that as we annex, the revenues generated by annexation can pay for the future maintenance of the infrastructure, since we can't, I mean, we're struggling with our infrastructure right now.
And so, if you're suggesting we should do a cost feasibility analysis on each annexation, is that what you're suggesting? I mean, and that's something that could be done, that'd be very difficult. I will tell you that we do collect impact fees, we do collect tap fees, we do, we do collect, there'll be property taxes that will be associated with this. Now, whether that offsets any kind of improvements that we would have to make to support this site, that's something I do not know. It's a great question, but...
It's a good question, it's out of our purview, as far as that. To also answer a bit of the edge of your question, what's the advantage versus disadvantage on the annexation, is on a piece of property like this, you look at it and you say, well, would you rather it R1 or R2? Well, they're asking for R2, they're not asking for R1, which maybe you prefer, you could, you could take the thought and say, well, out of the county, they got to have a hundred foot width, so let's just let it stay in the county, you know, if we want hundred foot width lots. But on the other hand, it's kind of like having a snake in the boat with you. You know, at some point, they decide to back off, and somebody puts a machine shop or an apartment, or, you know, something that's not at all compatible to that area there, when it's unzoned in the county, it's, you know, anything can happen today. So, that's part of the advantage of when it's zoned R2, you at least know this is the center of rules and regulations versus...
And I'm not opposed to this, I don't mean to derail us...
I'm just saying versus a junkyard or a...
Well, it was, it was just the two, and I get that, the two concerns were that it would be nice to have, to know, is our goal to annex everything up to the police jurisdiction? Is, what, you know, do we have a, does, do we have a limit? And then, do we have some assurance, and this is more maybe a city council question, but do we have some assurance that our fees are covering the ongoing amendments of what we're annexing?
Can I, can I address that for a moment? First of all, if we do annex everything up to our police jurisdiction, our police jurisdiction just expands.
It's huge.
So, our definition is if we keep marching east, so does the police jurisdiction, so I don't know if we'll ever reach the end of the jurisdiction. Secondly, as Wayne alluded to, you know, we have tap fees and impact fees to offset the cost of our infrastructure, but not only that, we're selling, we're getting property tax annually, and we're also selling services. So, if we're selling water and sewer, you know, the water and sewer services alone could be equal to or even up to double what we're receiving in property taxes every year. So, I think as a city that owns the utilities, if you want to look at it from a greedy side of things, it's advantageous to add, because I think that you come out ahead. In other words, you don't see us pulling back our services, we, we're trying to add to our services, because we make money off of our, off of our utilities.
Okay.
So, now, that's not an endorsement for or against that, but that's just from my viewpoint. I had this conversation with Councilman Brown this morning about providing some services to a certain development, and I thought, I told him that I thought it was incumbent upon us to get their services there, because the benefit is that we would sell services to, from now till, you know, whenever, and you'd recover those costs.
Wayne, I don't get the sense that we're seeing the kind of commercial in some of these areas that I would expect to be seeing. I would think probably in the last three meetings, we've approved over five hundred houses. These are houses that are all going to be on unzoned land, on major highways, and I just perceive the fact that at some point, we would have to figure out why we're not getting more commercial in this area, there's support mechanisms, maybe the what's missing.
Well, I would tell you, we do have contact with commercial realtors and people that are looking for sites. They're looking for, for housing, housing units, they're looking for houses that are on the ground typically. I think that's generally a little bit lagged behind, commercial will catch up when the homes actually constructed. We saw a lot of, just to give you an example, we saw a lot of home, a lot of platted lots back during the boom that never came to fruition, so I think there's, the commercial's going to lag behind from that perspective. That's why I think the village centers are so important, because of the village centers, we would, we would want to encourage those areas to be developed fully, and those village centers should be probably the most densely developed properties around, because it does create that walkability, it does create that town center feel, and it's an amenity, I think, to the surrounding properties. But we are, we do have contact frequently with, with commercial developers, they're looking for sites. But again, it's a little bit of a lag behind, and, I mean, they're looking at it, I mean, trust me, they have a lot more data than, than most people have when they're looking at, at locations. They know the average household income, the disposable income, all those things they have, that's factored in, and as a matter of fact, I had a gentleman that worked for me at the county that left and went to work for a commercial real estate firm in GIS, and all he does is crunch numbers, all around the country. He crunches numbers, and when those numbers add up and they work, trust me, they'll be there. Now, it's our, when it comes to that point, then it's, then it's our job to make, let's make sure that they're appropriately located in the right locations to make sure that we're also achieving the goal the city has, and so, but, but they're coming, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't think that they're not coming, because I think they will, the more homes you see, it's inevitable, they're going to be there. And quite frankly, you kind of want that, you don't want them driving all over the place, going to shopping center, you're putting more cars on the road. When we have these village centers close to these areas, I think you have shorter trips back and forth, which also relieves traffic.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to add on one thing to what I was saying to Mrs. Bryant, is that, something that you alluded to, and it's just something that, it's a fact of life here in Fairhope, and having all this open land to the east, is it's a catch-22. I mean, you can deny it, and then they can do what they want in the county, or you can, you can embrace it and, and recover the tax revenues or the, the impact fees and tap fees from this, or you can get nothing, and they still impact your community regardless. And so, what I try to do up here is I pick on the developers, you may think so, is I'm trying, trying to push the envelope and say, you know, give us the best that you can give us, you know, when you come into this city, give us the very best development you can give us, and I want to push you right up to the limit where you're not comfortable, where you're wondering, you know, if you're going to make it, but you give the people the most green space and, you know, the most common area that you can, so that everything's not cookie cutter and we have nice developments, because if we don't push that, they're going to put them in there, it's just a matter of how we, how we shape it. So, I don't want y'all to be offended by that, it's a, you know, it's our duty to, to get the best bang for the buck that we can, because it's coming.
And I, last comment.
And then we're getting back to ZC 1813.
Yeah, and it's a simple one, so, but, but my concern about the financial feasibilities is, I get, we need to make money because we have the existing that is not, that needs serious maintenance, and so, we need to, we need to do more than maintain the new, we need to fix the old. And so, I was looking for assurance that we're moving in that direction instead of in a stasis, which is not a satisfactory stasis.
Well, all those, all those improvements are being addressed right now as we speak.
All right, thank you. All right, John, do you have anything to add to this before I open the public hearing?
Mr. DeJonge, did you guys have any questions something you had to answer?
Right, thank you. Before I open the public hearing, I'd like to let everybody know that this is a rezoning. So, we, as the Planning and Zoning Commission, simply make a recommendation to the city council. You know, Jack Mayor may vote on this, or he may abstain on this. Sometimes city council people will abstain, because they'd rather wait until they have the shot at the, you know, the vote on the city council. That's totally up to him, but the bottom line... the bottom line is, we will simply make a recommendation to the city council, to either annex or not annex. And at the end of the day, the city council may or may not take that recommendation. So with that said, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do have two names of people to speak. The first name is Ken Holland. And Mr. Holland, if you don't mind, if you will let Emily know your address, so she can put it in our records, please.
(inaudible)
All right. Good deal. Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Well, for the, for the whole neighborhood, I drew the short straw, so I'm here.
Okay.
But we're, we're the community located to the east and west of Lawrence Road, just north of Gayford. The large lots that are not colored in. You've got the new subdivision to the west of us that's colored in orange, yellow, I'm sorry. And we're the group there that would be right at the, just south of the east end of the site. That group there, and also the ones to the east of the road, and that whole conglomeration. And we're all pretty happy the way things are, but unfortunately, no growth is coming. Just like for everybody to be real aware that that many houses for, with the R2 zoning, it could get up to a couple of hundred houses added to that area. And that's going to have, what, 2,000 to 4,000 people involved, with families. And that's going to add a good bit of traffic to the area. And I'm not sure Lawrence Road is really set up to handle that much traffic very well. And I'm guessing they're planning to build a city sewer system into this subdivision, because there's no sewage out that way toward us, or natural gas facilities in our area, which we got butane tanks. Of course, are we making plans for the increased amount of fire protection that would be required for that area? And then again, they did mention the lowlands area. That larger area put into a subdivision is going to create a lot of runoff. And we'd really need to be sure we're looking at the amount of rain runoff that would go into that wetlands area just to the north of the area. But anyway, that's one question if I could ask. When we talk about this, the next, being annexed, are we talking about just that one little site?
Just that site, yes, sir.
And then, would that be taking effect relatively soon, or down the road as they get the plat and the things together?
They're not, they have not brought a plat to us. There's a little sketch in there.
Yeah.
But that means absolutely nothing.
Yeah.
Bottom line is, we would make a recommendation. They would get on the city council agenda. Emily, how long does that generally take, plus or minus? About two months?
Yeah, okay.
And the city council would vote.
This would be something that if it did...
And if the city, if the city voted to accept that, then, you know, you're probably looking at January, February, it would then be annexed.
Within the next year, that would affect?
Be less than that, probably first of 19.
Yeah. Hmm. Things happen fast sometimes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Comments real quickly, if I could? Some great questions that he brought up. I want to make sure that people know that this is just, this is just the rezoning. When we move to the preliminary plat phase, all the things with fire flows and drainage and those things, and road, and road improvements, they will all be, taken, re-reviewed at that time. You saw a case, the first case we had, we were in great depth, looking at those things. So I can, I just want to make people aware that we will go through it very, very thoroughly to ensure they meet all the requirements of our subdivision regulations, and make sure all those issues are, are addressed. And so, as we move forward, that will be happening. This property does have some encumbrances as well, as far as its developability. So I don't think you'll see as many lots as someone may think they'll, they'll see. And also, we'll, we'll ensure that also, as they come forward to preliminary plat, we will make sure that the green space is appropriately located, and it's usable and so forth, because we are getting into a medium-density type, type level. And so, we want to make sure that those are placed correctly throughout the development for open space. But, but those things, the development issues will be addressed at the preliminary plat. This is just the annexation. And once the council reviews it, and if they do approve it, it will be annexed with a, with the R2 zoning.
Thank you. All right. Karen McDonald. Here, I've got the name of Karen, I've got the name of Karen McDonald.
Ms. McDonald.
To speak?
(inaudible).
Okay. Everybody else stepped back, and you were left standing by yourself. All right, thank you. Would anybody else wish to speak to this?
Chairman, can I make one quick, last thing I'll speak. I just want to make sure people are aware, there is a stubout street, and so there is connectivity with the site. Just to make sure that that's known.
Okay, thanks. If there's no other comments from the public, or Wayne, I will close the public hearing at this time, and turn the meeting back over to the commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Case number ZC 18.12. The bill's number two. I move, we make a recommendation to the county commission to accept.
City council.
Excuse me. Y'all have county commission, don't you?
We're also not the city council.
We're making a recommendation to the city council.
Make a recommendation to them. It probably won't go anywhere.
It's too many years of being with the planning officials of the county, man. I mean, you know, you can't beat an old horse. Make a recommendation to the city council to accept this conditional, I mean, this annexation rezoning.
I've got a motion to, to recommend to the city council to approve the R2 zoning. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is...
Ms. Tyler, if I might ask you, would you be interested in natural gas instead of propane?
No.
Would you be interested in natural gas instead of propane?
Well, I'm already set up for propane.
Okay. We're not that far away to answer your question about it.
All right. Next item on the agenda, ZC, another zoning, 1813 Nichols Avenue. Yes, sir.
And Chairman Commissioners, we have a zoning change for you. And Commissioners, we'll begin on this slide while I call your attention to the zoning map. What I'd like to point out, in addition to the basic components of the application that you see on the screen before you, we see the location of the property and the owner of the property. This is approximately 3/8 mile east of Greeno Road. The zoning change request is from R1 low-density, single-family residential to M1 light industrial. And Commissioners, if you'll, if you'll, if you'll turn your attention to the yellow, the yellow property on the, right in the center of the image, there are two pieces of property requested for rezoning. The PPINs are called out with balloons, so it encompasses the entire, the entire site. Going to the aerial view, and you see the continuation of the, of the basic information of the application. This is a recommendation for approval with conditions. What we've done here in the aerial image is called out some of the landmarks nearby, nearby the site. You see the proximity of Tony's Towing, their facility, the VFW facility. And the balloon in the lower left-hand corner, that is pointing out another piece of property, also utilized by Tony's Towing. And we'll explain the significance of that in a future slide. So, we'll begin by examining the site plan. And as we saw in Mr. Dyess's project and in others, is that whenever we have a rezoning case, the applicant will give us a site plan to describe their desire. And what we're showing here in this aerial image is that the site plan they furnished in the form of a, in the form of a survey plat, we'll see on a future slide. The desire is, is that in addition to the annexation, is a proposed conveyance of property from the, one of the subject properties to the Tony's Towing property. And so, you'll see that we've called them out there with balloons. And this is a, a similar, a similar case was considered by the planning commissioner and the city council back in 2012. You'll note at the bottom of the text there on your slide, we indicate the ordinance number whereby that occurred. So what you would have in this situation was, the site plan reflects that future conveyance. You'll see the PPINs are described up top. We have all of that text in here, so that way we can use it to answer questions. We'll touch on the comprehensive plan. So now we're beginning the actual list of criteria that we go through when we consider rezoning, much like Wayne did previously. In this instance, in, in this instance, in reference to the comprehensive plan, what we'll note here is, what I'll call your attention to, is the, the third, the bottom bullet point there on the left side of your screen, is that you have, we're right on the edge of the Greeno Road Village Center, as described in the comprehensive plan. And evaluating this site, evaluating this rezoning request, the, the towing company operation supports the automobile transportation nature of this village center, which is reflected in the comprehensive plan. And so, you'll see, you note the stadium there. This appears to be a logical extension of that village containing high levels of automobile traffic. We'll explain how it kind of forms an edge here in just a moment. So, the other criteria, we'll look at the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. And what I'll call your attention to here is, if you look at the zoning map, we've zoomed out to show the corridor of Nichols Avenue, beginning on the west side, close to Ingleside, going through, going to the east, crossing Greeno, and traversing down Nichols, all the way to subject property. And so, you'll notice this is, you have a, you have an M1 zoned corridor. And what, if this zoning is approved, that would basically put that M1 zoning up to that, that far east piece of property that remains an unzoned Baldwin County. So it's possible this requested rezoning would serve as an edge of commercial development, which is one of the concepts the comprehensive plan mentions, is giving village centers and commercial development edges. There's a possibility of attaining that here. A very brief note here, again, going through the criteria, you see the, the references from the zoning ordinance, the adequacy of public infrastructure. And we note that gas, water, sewer, and electrical service are available at the location. For the applicant's information, another, from a natural resources standpoint, we consult the web soil survey from USDA. And you'll see that we've made a note in there for the applicant's information. We do see some grady soils on the site. So they're encouraged to contact the building official prior to any land disturbance requests, to determine how to handle those grady soils. So again, the natural resources aspect, much like Wayne talked about earlier. Going again through the criteria, going one by one, the compliance with other laws and regulations, we note that because this is in the city of Fairhope, the various regulatory ordinance would be in effect. Also, we note the compliance with laws of other organizations, depending upon how the wall, how the property is developed, that could trigger ADM requirements, et cetera. What we'd like to talk about here, impacts on the adjacent property. And this slide basically has copied the entire text from your staff, from your staff report. What I'd like to illuminate for you is in yellow right there, with the exception of an automobile repair facility, the most intense uses, such as service, automobile service centers, junkyards, salvage yards, outdoor sales yards, personal storage facilities. Those types of uses require approval by the Board of Adjustments prior to establish that type of use. That is an additional vetting process. And so what we note here is the nature of the existing use of the adjacent property to subject property. The screening requirements of the tree landscape ordinance, as well as the additional vetting required via the Board of Adjustments, would mitigate any impacts of the addition of the adjacent surrounding properties. Because it's very likely that the towing company, Tony's Towing, would wish to extend their current use onto the piece of property proposed for rezoning, that would be acquired via conveyance. To implement that use would require an appeal to the Board of Adjustments, on top of this zoning request, assuming approval. We'll talk about traffic very briefly here. Now, what you see here is a snapshot of the actual proposed replat reflecting conveyance. This is the actual former site plan included with this application. The light beige color is the existing office building on the existing subject property. The light brown color south of that is the proposed conveyance, proposed conveyance to the Tony's Towing property. The main note that we would like to, to call your attention here is that the, the existing non-conforming uses in office facility will be maintained, based upon everything we've seen in this application. And the application for rezoning does not request any change of use or development activity. That is believed that would create a traffic pattern, a change in traffic patterns. Everyone's favorite subject compatibility analysis. What we will say here, of course, this is not introducing, this, this zoning change requested here is not introducing a high-density residential use into a residential area. And a lot of words here to basically explain that, again, density transition, because the comprehensive plan contemplates from commercial to high-density residential, descending downward. You'll see that north of and south of the subject property, that's R3 PGH, patio garden homes, which is a higher level, a very high level of single-family density. And so you're transitioning out of that commercial, that heavy commercial, into that high-level density. So therefore, our staff recommendation is approval of the case, and forwarding to the city council for final approval. We, we do wish to reflect, as a condition of approval, that a junkyard or salvage yard use for the portion of subject property reflected on the site plan must be appealed to the zoning Board of Adjustment, if, if that, if that use is requested by the eventual property owner. And we have Mr., we have, we have the engineer with us here today, and Mr. Tiamal Lali with HMR on behalf of the applicant. But before we turn it over to Mr. Lali, I'm happy to answer questions.
You have any questions for the staff?
Anybody know how the residents that back up to that property feel about that? There are four residential lots that back up to that. And we, just in the last discussion, talked about, you know, well, if that remains in the county, what's going to come of that? And here we are, right in the center of town, moving a salvage yard on to people's backyards.
And Chairman Commissioners, that's a fantastic question. I thank the Council President for that, because what you'll, exactly, and as you look on this drawing right here, that is zoomed out a bit greater, the bright, the bright purple of the M1 zoning is reflected. So not only do you have, you have the M1, you have the, the two lots immediately west of subject property, but then you have the additional one southwest of there as well. And the, the lot that is the southwest, I think my recollection is, is that Tony's Towing acquired it via conveyance from the VFW, and went through a similar zoning process. Now, what was done at that time, they accomplished it via condition of approval to, to mandate the screening requirements between the residential property and the M1 property. Our recommendation is slightly different, because the, the buffering requirements of the tree landscape ordinance give the property owner several different options for compliance with the screening. So, and they have noted, one, one edit that we request to be reflected on their conveyance plat. It reflects on their plat as a note that they must comply with the ordinance 1444. But also, to better answer that question, haven't had any feedback from any residences prior to the meeting, expressing any interest there. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, but also, there was a, public notice was sent out via, via registered mail, also assigned with placement property. And then, as far as the appeal to the Board of Adjustments for the junkyard use, that will also go out with a public notice to the joining property owners. And also, that process is governed by criteria that's established in the ordinance for, for the appealable uses. But Emily, do we get any phone calls or feedback?
Yes, that's what I was going to add. I did receive several phone calls from across the street in Hawthorne Glen, as well as residents to the rear. When I said that potentially they were looking, Tony's Towing was potentially looking at expanding their operation, two of the residents to the rear did state that Tony's Towing had been a great neighbor. And they had no concerns with that being a change.
Do we get any letters or emails?
No, sir. Just telephone calls.
And Commissioners, if you'll look, I moved back to this image where we zoomed in a little tighter, where we were talking about the grady soils. But also, you'll notice, south of the existing building on the subject property, one of the allowances for screening buffering is if they wished, they could leave a portion of the existing very thick, heavy vegetation. They could leave that undisturbed as part of their screening buffering requirements. But we didn't want to dictate how they do it, because they have several options available in the, in the, in the tree and landscape ordinance. So for example, I'll read this very quickly. An opaque fence not less than eight feet in height, with horizontal, vertical openings not greater than three inches per one linear foot, and a four-foot wide strip of evergreen plantings, which will... plantings, which will grow to at least six feet in height within three full growing seasons, et cetera, et cetera. So there's several other different options and combinations for doing that, or they could leave the remaining vegetation in place, which appears to be quite thick as well.
And also, I think the Board of Adjustments would have the authority, if they'd so choose, to beef up a buffer as part of their approval, if they did get approval. I think the Board would have that ability.
Didn't that occur on the property to the west of this? Didn't they require, and I want to say that there was a 10-foot requirement, I could be wrong, maybe it went from six to eight, but I thought it was a 10-foot requirement.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And that was certainly the desire of the planning commission at the time, when they reviewed that case. Looking at it from our point of view, we figured, I'd feel more comfortable recommending what we have covered in a landscaping ordinance. But we certainly understand, certainly understand the commission's concerns on that piece of property. This one right here, they have quite a few more options, because they can, like we talked about ad nauseam, they can utilize their existing vegetation if they wished.
Thank you, Beaufort. Tim, do you have anything to add before I open the public hearing? All right, thank you. At this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Again, just as I said last time, we'll simply make a recommendation to the city council, not the county commission, but the city council will make a recommendation to, and they'll decide, ultimately make the decision on this. So would anybody wish to speak to this item?
I did not have anyone signed up.
Nobody signed up. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and turn this over to the Commissioners. And Tim is here on behalf of the developer, if you've got any questions for him.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Case ZC 18.13, 8330 Nichols Avenue, rezoning recommend, or I suggest that we recommend the county commission, the city council approval. Subject to staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? The staff recommendation for the public states junkyard or salvage yard uses for the portion of subject property reflected in the included site plan must be appealed to the zoning board of adjustment. Any other further discussion?
Would that be done prior to consideration by the city council?
No, because that's not what they're looking to do, I don't think. That would have to be done before they got that approval.
Yes, they would have to have the zoning in place that would allow the use to then make the appeal to the Board of Adjustments.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, SD 1838, public hearing to consider a request of Truland Homes LLC for a plat approval of OBV acres of three-lot minor subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, this is a three-lot minor subdivision, and the purpose of this is simply to allow some financing for these phases of the development. It's a very simple subdivision, total track is 39.75 acres. The largest lot in the subdivision is 14.9 acres, the smallest is 12.41 acres. And if you look at the plat with the PUD master plan, you can see that they correspond, lots one, two, and three correspond to lots four, five, and six, respectively. I won't go into a lot of the history of this, because we've just seen the hamlet, and it's got the very same history. But I did want to point out that there is a PUD approval pending on those, to amend the phases of Old Battles Village, the phases three, four, five, and six. And right now, that is pending council. I believe Emily said it's on the 29th, is the date that it's supposed to go to council. And pretty much, it's all in line, except the council approval. So if you have any questions, you can...
So Nancy, this three, just so everybody's clear, these three lots are in front of the city council to be approved as a PUD with...
No, they were doing some PUD amendments that are for that same vicinity. And the hamlet, you've already looked at the hamlet, that was, I believe, phase five last week. So we're looking at each of these phases individually as preliminary plats. This is simply a subdivision for financing.
So we haven't looked at this before, with lots divided up on this?
Not in this way. They correspond, this is all kind of financial subdivision, not necessarily, the preliminary plats come in with the hamlet, and then, which is phase five, that we just, they're starting pre-construction on that. And then the others are phase four and phase six. So this is just for financing purposes. These are the larger lots, they're just kind of raking it up for that. If John wants, or Jason wants to speak to it?
Ultimately, lot one will be phase four, lot two will be phase five, which is the hamlet, and lot three will be phase six. And all of those are of Old Battles Village, which have a master plan approved for that site.
We've already approved. So we've approved 102 lots, and now they want to break this out, get through it, okay?
Yeah, this is sort of a unique animal, we discussed this at length. Basically, what you have is, you have this property that is going, as I understand, they want to convey it to different entities under their corporate umbrella. So you have some approvals in place, but they have not been, you have a preliminary plat approval, but which they have not had final plat approval on. What this three-lot subdivision does, is takes these pieces of property, puts them under different corporate umbrellas, is my understanding. So the development will move forward as it's been planned. These three lots are purely to be able to convey these things off to another corporate entity under their umbrella. And so ultimately, the result will be, the development will be just as you approved with the PUD.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for staff this time? All right. Is this requiring, I mean, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing, but this requires it?
He does.
Okay. Do you have anything to add this time, John?
No, Wayne did it, I'm going to nail him.
Okay, he is here, in case you have any questions. In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing, and turn this over to the Commissioners.
May I have your prayer?
I've got a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Put Charles down for the second one, if you will. Emily, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda, public hearing to request Montrose Properties, Inc. for preliminary plat approval for Fox Hollow Phase Three, a 32-lot subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioner. What we have here today is SD 18.39, it's Fox Hollow, Phase Three, is the third, there are no future phases proposed at this time, but it's the third phase, that'll be connecting phases one and phases two together. It's at the request of HMR, on behalf of Montrose Properties, who's the applicant for the preliminary plat approval for Fox Hollow. It's a 32-lot major subdivision. Property is located on the east side of County Road 13, approximately 1,750 feet south of Morphe Avenue. Subject property is approximately 13.78 acres. The smallest lot size is 11,363 square feet, with the largest lot being 18,597 square feet. Average lot size is 13,154 square feet. Like I said, it's the third phase that connects the phase one and phase two to County Road 13, and will give Fox Hollow subdivision in its entirety, a total of three entrances, two off of Morphe Avenue, and one off of County Road 13. Here are just a few pictures taken from the entrance of what the future phase will be, a view looking from the property, looking towards the north, looking towards the south, looking towards the subject property from across the street, and this is one of the future through streets from Fox Hollow Phase One, that will be connecting it there. There was a traffic study that was conducted for the phases one and phases two, and with a letter from Kenneth Nichols, the engineer with Gulf Coast Traffic and Development Services, provided a letter confirming that the traffic study was reviewed again to ensure that the additional lots coming from phase three will not have an impact on the recommendation for the initial traffic study. HMR provided a master plan, showed the connectivity between the phases and the locations of the green space. And you'll notice that the green space that is located on County Road 13 shows up here, but it is, that common area is not counted towards the green space percentages, as it is adjacent to a collector and articular street, and it only accounted for a .3% difference in the overall. And I have those changes in future slides. And you see the green space, we were talking about on previous cases, there's not a main green space in this phase. Phase one actually encompasses enough percentage for it, and the green space here allows for passive recreation to get from the future, from this phase, the different lots, towards the green space that is located in phase one, along with the sidewalk connectivity that can take you to that green space area to play with your kids in the yard. Here are just the site data table, that gives you, breaks down all the information, the total size of lots, and the green space. And you see, I've noted here that phase three, where we subtracted the little portion that was on County Road 13, brought down the total green space for the entirety of the site to 12.6% from 12.9. Phase three itself has 6.2% alone, so it's over halfway to what would be required if it was a standalone subdivision. But again, it has a total of 12.6% green space for this total site. Paul Merchant, with the city's horticulturalist, reviewed and approved the landscaping plan that included the tree preservation plan. If you've seen, there is a fairly large tree on lot 118, and HMR has stated that the tree is, it's proposed to stay, it's 95 feet from the front setback, which gives an adequate building area. As far as the different LID techniques, the total area of phase three, give me one second, is 13.56 acres. Majority of the, majority of the property, 11.51 acres will drain to the phase three pond, 1.55 acres will go into phase two ponds, and a half acre will drain into the phase one pond. All of the drainage will eventually go through one of the wet ponds, which is an 80% TSS removal, which is what is the minimum required. But they've actually included, if you read in it along with the narrative here, that the different acres also go through a pretreatment before it gets to that, raising the TSS removal up. So the water coming out will be a whole lot cleaner than what it is going out. They've included grass buffers, grass channels, a dry retention basin, a bio-retention basin, and they're going to be doing a wetland enhancement. We talked, mentioned that on a previous, they're actually going to be improving a wetland pond to increase its capacity, to increase and help the filtration of the water before it exits the site. And here's where I highlighted the differences in the techniques that they're using with the percentages that go, correspond with it. Here I've highlighted the different LID techniques that are being used. You have in the very light green are a grass buffer, the darker green is a grass well, with the blue being the, where the future enhancement to the wetland will be. And then the orange is the basin that will be funneling a lot of the water into. Here's just a comparison where the green space is compared to where the LID techniques are. You can see that this is, the green space was eliminated from the front of County Road 13 for this slide. And again, it just shows the connectivity where it's directing the traffic of flow of pedestrians towards phase one, towards where the center of the property away from County Road 13, where the children and recreational activities can take place in the much larger green space. I'd be happy to answer any question that the commission may have.
Any questions for the staff, Commissioners?
Flip back to the landscape plan?
Yes, ma'am.
You got a question, Rebecca?
I guess my, I'm sympathizing with Jack on this one, where the green space in this is just not, it's a strip around a ditch.
No, you don't forget, this is phase three. The green space in this one is some of the best green space we've got anywhere around the lake.
That's what I'm, I appreciate the context. And it's good to see, the landscape plan is really helpful when you just see the color coded, and you see a thin pencil line of green, that's... So this is a wetland that is being converted to stormwater treatment?
On the northeast, on the northeast corner, yes, ma'am. That area, that area, they're going through the permitting process with Eric Cortina's to get the appropriate permits to enhance that wetland. So it'll actually be going, increasing in size, I believe, I don't know if I have that actual number on here, but it is going to be more than doubling in size to increase the capacity, the water, overflow water that it can hold, and then release it at a much slower rate than what it would in its current state.
Is that, the wetland up there, is that a grady pond?
Yes, sir.
That's a grady pond.
It's a grady pond.
It's not a running...
Not a run.
It's not a running pond.
And according to the, according to the city ordinance, a grady pond is considered a wetland under the city ordinance, it's not jurisdictional wetland, but we do require mitigation.
That's right.
That's helpful. It's a very positive thing to use green infrastructure, as a gray infrastructure, but I, you know, red flags go up when you start hearing about reconfiguring wetlands.
Correct.
So how do we treat, I mean, with phasing, we just look at the green space for the whole thing, regardless of the phases? Because that...
Yes, they brought it up together, you know, it's one thing that we like to look at, is bring all the phases up together at once, so you kind of see what the ultimate plan's going to be. You know, ultimately, they like to usually build them so they, the income stream comes in as they do the phases. And in this one, the water retention and the green spaces were all done in phase one, and were done, I think actually, oh man, this has the nicest sidewalk out on Morphe I've ever seen, going through the wetlands, and has really treated everything with care out there.
And this development has probably in about its second or third year of development, and so as Mike mentioned, they provided above the requirement, and so with cases like that, you don't do it by, I guess you could do it by phase, our ordinance doesn't specify that. I would, going forward, like we talked about before, earlier in the meeting, we would like to make sure that the common space is provided more centrally located in an area. This one does not fall within that, obviously, and they have more than is required, but going in future developments, we would like to see more centrally located common area.
Well, when it can't be more centrally located, I liked what I heard Mike saying about the fact that the green space might be used to, for people to get to the central location, I just don't see how that happens in the plan. Is there a parking trail, is there like...
Well, there's not necessarily a walking trail, it would be the space that is on the rear of that side of the lot, that would give those people the chance to walk through it there. The sidewalk would be used for the other side of the street, where they don't have any of that common area to be able to walk, but it'd be, it'd be a spot, you know, where people go walk, take your dogs for a walk, on that side, they can access it from the backyard, if they put up, you know, I kind of envisioned it more seeing more like broad iron fences put up where you can have a gate to get to that back area, to be able to take your dog for a walk, throw a football with your kid, or you... To be able to throw the football with your kid, or run, take that entrance and carry it up towards the larger, kind of northerly centrally located green space that is in the exposed neighborhood. And then again, with the green space, a lot of it being in phase one, it's required to be in phase one, and not spread out through all the phases, so you can't have 4% in phase one, and then phase two and three, never happen, and then you're left with a great idea that's part of phase two and phase three, but it never comes to fruition, and you're left with very inadequate green space in the first initial phase.
Mike, more out of curiosity than anything else, on the conceptual LID plan, it shows a nice green...
a nice green border going around everything except six lots, 113 through 118, where there's nothing on the back of those lots, what, what happens there? Is that?
Let me just have to see which lots in particular.
See in the upper left here, it just goes in about six lots, none of the green goes in that area.
116 through 118, that's on the north side of the property?
Yeah, right up in the upper corner. There's no green area in there, I just wondered why that was.
Lots 116 and 118 are on the?
If there's a reason for it, that's fine, I just.
Trying to make sure I'm looking at the same place.
They get a bigger lot, that's all, or something happens.
The, the green space on the, I'm Tim Lawley with HMR, green space, I said I'm Tim Lawley with HMR. The green space on the east side on the north line is a, it's not, it's not a green space, as you're talking about the LID plan, it's a grass well, and there's some off-site drainage coming from the property to the north that we're picking up and not letting come onto those lots. Once you get back over to the west side, the, the drains to the north feeds west back out to Morphe, and so those lots will drain directly to the road, there's no need for a swell back there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Who maintains that swell, y'all?
The Owners Association would, I assume, is that correct, Tim?
Yes, in most cases, that would be the POA that would be responsible for maintenance.
I'll go ahead, is any more questions for the staff? If not, I'll open the?
I, I have a question about it. So on Phase One, on the 8.38 acres of green space, how much of that is, how much of it was not green space could you build upon?
Excuse me, how much is it if it was not?
Yeah, about if it wasn't green space, that 8.38 acres, how much of that's buildable?
Pretty much the majority of it.
It is?
In the center there, where you can see the area that's north of the green space, that, that would be wetlands, we can't, you can't count wetlands as green space. So when you get back there and there's that green space on the north side of the wetlands, that's probably not buildable on, because it'd be unfeasible.
But all that to the left there?
Yes, all that to the, just on the north side of the street is very buildable.
Okay.
Part of the buffer.
It's really nice that it borders the street.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pretty drive-in through coming on the main road in there.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time if there are no further questions. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, you see Tim is here, obviously, if you have any further questions for him. Tim, I'd just like to say, I drove through there, I thought that was one of the best uses of, you know, green space that I've seen, the sidewalk on Morphe Avenue is the nicest sidewalk I've seen, just beyond going through that wetlands there, where a lot of people say, oh, you can't go through wetlands, and to actually build it up and go over the wetlands like that and connect that on Morphe, this is one of the nicest subdivisions we've seen, not just meeting the, checking the boxes on the subdivision regs, but as far as just the spirit of the subdivision, and I think that's one reason that y'all are already at Phase Three, just, you know, two years into the project. Anybody want to have any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Case SD 18.39, Fox Hollow, Phase Three, I move that we approve it.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next item on the agenda is SD 1840, a two-lot minor subdivision on the north side of Mosley Road across from Plainview Drive. Nancy?
Yes, this is just really a subdivision to separate two parcels. The total track is approximately 9.36 acres, the largest is 6.9, I'm sorry, the largest lot is 6.69 acres, the smallest is 2.46 acres, and they're doing this to adjust lot lines to separate buildings, basically, and a couple items, just to note, the tree inventory, typically we require a tree inventory, but in this particular case, the trees are all in the wetland area, and we felt like for a minor subdivision on a private parcel that could be, you know, they, they can take out the trees for residents. So on this particular one, we felt like it was excessive to ask for that inventory. They provided an aerial, they showed locations that there are significant trees in there, there is some protection via the wetlands protection, buffers. And the second item was sidewalks, they have requested a waiver for sidewalks, and they seemed amenable to the 10-foot easement like we have done on Unzoned Property previously, and he just accidentally left it off the plat, so that's one thing, and the other is, there was a note that we felt like for the wetlands uses in the buffer, we'd like a little bit more clarification on that, so. That cover set? Uh, sorry, okay, there we go. Okay, do you have any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Just from the aerial, it looks like maybe the wetlands are happening on the, the west side, but there's a lot of trees to the south, and?
That's an existing parcel, I mean, that, that's a residence right now.
That's not what's being subdivided?
It is.
It is, here. But in unzoned property, they, obviously on a residence, they can cut the trees, but they are living there now, so there's.
I would just hope like the, I won't belabor the point, but, but they can cut the trees, but if you require a tree survey, it sort of assists people to plan around the trees if they have where they're located.
And if this was a larger subdivision, we, we wouldn't have required that.
Okay.
Thank you, Nancy. This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Is anybody here on behalf of the applicant, Smith, Clark and Associates has listed this survey, is that you? Okay, so he's here if y'all have any questions. So commissioners, I'll turn the meeting over to you if you have any questions, the staff and applicant both have representatives here. If no questions, I'll accept a motion. I have a motion to approve, subject to the staff recommendation, and the staff recommendation on that is to have a 10-foot sidewalk easement and clarify a note on the plat regarding the requirement for wetlands by adding the required buffer, and any allowed uses with the wetlands buffer shall be compliance with the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations, Article Five, Subject F dot four, string buffers.
Now, let me just state that the 10-foot easement would be if you all grant the waiver, so you'd have to grant waiver to the sidewalks, but the addition of that easement.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what happens if somebody takes one of these parcels and then creates another minor subdivision?
They could do that tomorrow.
Pardon?
They could do that tomorrow, I mean, not tomorrow, but they could, as soon as they do this, they could come in for another one. Until it gets to where you don't have the 100 foot of width or the acreage requirements that were true.
And I'm not, I'm kind of using this as an example, and I don't, I don't have an issue with this really, but I just, I think that sometimes we will create minor subdivisions, and we may get waivers, and, and then the next time it's divided, do we give the waivers, and then we've got four lots instead of two lots, and where does it, where does it end?
Mr. Sidewalks even should require the sidewalks out there, but I, I like the ideas that he's going to tell.
Well, I'm sorry, Jack, what was the question?
The question was, what's to prevent the minor subdivision, which, you know, dividing this into two lots as a minor subdivision, to keep each of those parcels from being?
Resubdivided.
Divided into more minor subdivisions.
In other words, two become four, and four become eight.
Nothing.
And then it never reverts back to what the requirements were for a major subdivision. It's a tool people can use to get around.
And it's always, it's always been an issue.
And I don't want to point the finger at anybody, but it's a conversation that, you know, comes up from time to time, and I don't know how you can divide without being mindful of that. I mean, I had, I had a friend actually call me about wanting to divide some land, and he had all these requirements, because he took this big piece of land, the city was imposing all these requirements on him, and of course, I just, I didn't get involved, I said, well, you need to, you know, come to the planning commission, just take you, you know, take a shot at it.
And that's a, that's a very, very common concern that I've heard throughout my whole career, I mean, you've had, people, some people will strategize and do it that way, so to try to subvert the standards of the major subdivision process. I think it's come up on us to watch that and try to monitor and track that, it is difficult to do, but that's something that has happened throughout my 25 years of doing these things, and that's.
And I don't know that you can say conditional upon, if you come back in the next five years and try to, to resubdivide it, we're going to impose all the restrictions on you.
I think that would be a great condition for us to start using, I mean, whatever that timeframe, whatever.
If we could do that, I would.
Historically, the problem is, is when you start putting conditions on things, a lot of times they get missed, staff changes, time changes things. Today, though, with.
All of those little nuances associated with.
But today, with modern technology and the ability to put, you know, we can.
Now, I tell you, I did, I will tell you, Wayne's probably speak to it better than, than I can, but there were times where we had them out in, out in the county, either in a zone or an unzoned area, and they would come and they would want to take, let's say, a 40-acre piece, and they wanted to put, it, it was really bad at one time where they wanted all the road frontage, and they would, they would carve that all, and the remaining parcel would be left just there, and in a lot of instances, they just said, to heck with it, they just let it go. And, and so what we started requiring them to do was give us an overall plat plan for, for those, because, don't come back here and say, now, you're gonna, you're gonna do something different on the inside, but we required them to give us that so that it would circum, they couldn't circumvent that minor subdivision.
And Jack, my concern's always been, you know, here we give a waiver of the subdivision to me, I meant of the sidewalks, and to me, that's not because it's a minor subdivision, if there were sidewalks on either side, I'd want them to be connected, or if something were coming in soon.
Yeah.
You know, my concern is that old, you know, death by a thousand, small cuts, is, you know, here we've got, and now this is probably not going to create any, this looks to me like it's a family something, and you've already got two houses, but, you know, my concern is when we have some of these come out, like we have one on County Road 32 that required no water retention because of the lot size, and then you get these minor subdivisions that don't require water retention because they're minor subdivisions, and you get two here and four there, and eight, and two, and four, and when you've been on here as long as I have, I don't know how many, you know, probably, I probably approved a thousand of these things with zero water retention, you know, but then a lot comes in with 32 lots, and you've got to have that water retention, that's always been my concern, is, you know, just, you know, everybody wants to, to point at the Walmart when the, you know, when the water retention gets bad, but the truth of the matter is, I live on Calpe Creek, when the Walmart was built, the drainage got a lot better afterwards because they oversized. Now that more buildings are coming in, that may change something, because they did the water retention for everything coming in afterwards, but, you know, you just do a house here and a house there, and after a while, a lot more water coming off and no water retention on any of them.
And that's a, and that's a concern, when I was, previous location working, we instituted a, a ordinance that said basically that if you, if you're developing a lot that doesn't, that's not a part of a subdivision with a, with a drainage plan approved, then you have to do onsite drainage on that lot. That's something you could do, nothing crazy, you know, a lot of time LID stuff could take care of a lot of the drainage, that's, if this is a problem and we're concerned about that, I think that's something we may want to evaluate and look at.
Another issue would be to acquire larger sized lots on these little smaller, you know, just required.
Well, if you're in the county, in, in our ETJ, you're required to have 100 feet of lot width. If that's a concern, the larger that lot width becomes, the less likely that is to occur, with these minor subdivisions and splitting them up, and, because, because otherwise, you know, if you want to do something small, you have, you have to annex into the city to do something smaller, which then puts the, puts the city kind of in that, in the position of approving or denying a rezoning, and make sure they meet all the standards at that point.
I, I would love for us to consider what we can do with individual lots that don't have stormwater requirements, I think we're at that point with our stormwater, where we, we need to be looking at that, or we're past that point where we need to be looking at that, and there's a double-edged sword with the large lots, because then you're, you're increasing, you know, theoretically roadway, or, you know, the sprawl to service on those large lots has a stormwater impact as well, so you have to keep balancing.
Absolutely. All right. But normal is? I've opened and closed the public hearing. Any further questions? If not, I'll accept a motion.
We have a motion.
I think we already did all.
Oh, we got the motion, the second.
Really? A second?
Charles.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second.
And then we just got.
Okay, then.
You went down the yellow brick road.
With no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Does that include the waiver for the sidewalk?
Yes, it was, the motion was.
As the staff recommendation.
So it'd be the waiver, but the easement required. Correct.
Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda, Southern Light, 115211 review for approximately 732 feet of fiber optic running along Morphe Avenue and South Section Street to service the Citizens Bank at 104 Section Street.
Well, you've pretty much covered all of it, these, this has our standard conditions in it. We normally don't allow trenching, all of this will be bored except one eight-foot section that Eric Cortina's looked at and has approved trenching in that location. There is, and I will tell you, with the hurricane going on, this, they originally proposed this as 732 linear feet. We've just had a policy within our department that, that it comes to an 115211 if it's over 500 feet, and they came to us in the midst of this process and said that they actually are going to do 432 feet, which means they could go straight to building permit, but we went ahead and moved it forward, because they're so tied up with hurricane stuff, we didn't, they didn't, couldn't get the manager to sign the documents for us to verify that, and I just felt like we'd just kind of continue it through the process, simply they were working on higher priorities. So, that's it.
Thank you. I don't see anybody here from Southern Light, so I'll go ahead, this is not a public hearing, I don't see anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this, so I'll go ahead and just turn this over to the commissioners. Commissioners, any questions, concerns, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, you are 1807, request?
Who is the second?
Ralph Thayer. Request for AT&amp;T 115211 review for approval of the proposed underground installation of approximately 5,400 feet of fiber optic, the project will run throughout Coale Creek subdivision, but they're happy out there. Nancy?
This is, it's been reviewed by all the utilities, the, all the superintendents, and it's, there are standard conditions, there were no issues, concerns.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, old slash new business. The Verandas, Phase One, SD 1709, Phase Three and Four, request a one-year extension. Anything to add to that, Wayne?
I don't, no, sir.
Anybody have a problem giving a year extension?
No.
If not, I'll accept a motion.
Move through.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second by Ralph, any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Election of officers.
Can I, can I ask a question right here?
Yes, sir.
Before we get, what happened to, what happened to the departments up in, behind Publix?
Hadn't heard from them, so they have not, have they submitted for the?
Yeah, I showed up for a proposed.
I mean, I don't want a long dissertation.
No, the apartment's up there on 104, Dick Higby Road, that's the one you're talking about?
No, 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 behind Publix.
Oh.
The meeting we're in.
They're moving forward, for the settlement in the case.
Okay, that's, that's all of it, because weren't they supposed to come this, tonight?
They were, but the case was settled, and that was not necessary.
It's all needed, thank you very much.
All right, election of officers, I'll turn this over to Ralph.
I would nominate our eminent chairman for a new.
I would nominate our eminent chairman for a new term as chairman for this office for the next year. Second.
Got a nomination, a second. Any other nominations?
I will move the nominations be closed. Second.
Okay. In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Nay. Ralph, for...
I would nominate Rebecca Bryant for her excellent work as a contributor as a vice chair. Second.
I've got a motion, a second. Any further nominations?
Move the nominations be closed. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye, any opposed, say nay.
Congratulate the winners.
All right, now moving along, we have the...
Oh, and by the way, the chairman and the vice chair have to buy dinner tonight.
How about drinks?
Not tonight.
You've got to vote on the secretary.
Yes, we need, Ralph, we need a motion for our...
What do we need?
Emily.
We need Emily to be our secretary. Handle that, would you?
I'll move.
Did Emily be our secretary?
I have a motion and a second to nominate Emily for our secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
I didn't mean to slight you. I just regarded you as in perpetual trust.
We have the agenda scheduled.